Any other comments, discussion, grab a motion then to approve as submitted?
So moved.
Okay, any?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention and Jeff has aye.
Just said aye.
Very good. Okay, it's not quite six thirty-five, so if you want to start your, anything on the update, that would be great.
Yes, so actually I'll start with something that's not on your agenda. So on March eighth, you signed an A and R that was prepared by Burton Engineering for twenty-one New Boston Road, the fix restaurant that's being built, and the engineering company misplaced the Mylar, and they were supposed to get us one by this evening to be just re-signed, same thing, no changes. I've waived the fee and it's not here, so I would ask that you vote to allow the clerk to come into the office and sign once it arrives.
Great, could I have such a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Jeff votes yes, very good.
Thank you. And how much time do I have? I don't have enough time to get into the FEMA. I can say Dane and Sue are up for reappointment. If you wish to be reappointed, you need to send a letter of interest to the town administrator, and I would copy Michelle Garman, her executive assistant, and Janay will email both of you the information tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Next meeting's June twenty-eighth, July twelfth. We have the continuation for Blueberry Hill Estates. Michael cannot participate and Charlie will not be here, so Sue, you will be running the meeting.
What's the date of that?
July twelfth. And we may or may not get through it that evening. And if not, we'll continue, we'll take whatever information we can get that evening and then continue to the next meeting. And Michael, I want to get a legal opinion because the first session you missed, it was only to vote to continue it to the next, and the law says you can miss one session. But since it was just called to order and continued, I'm wondering if we can still have the mall and law apply, but I've never really hit that situation, so I do want to get an opinion before then, so, because, you know, if somebody else has to travel or something, then it puts us without a quorum because we need five members for a special permit, so I'll make myself a note to get a legal opinion.
Very good.
And that's probably all I can do?
Well, we only have another minute to wait and it'll be six thirty-five.
Because I don't think I can get through FEMA that quickly.
No, I think there's some things in there.
I can tell you that you might have seen a lot of juggling of storefronts down at Hobbs Brook and they're, the Olympia Sports is moving out, however, we have a sign application for Five Below to move into that space. The sign didn't comply with our requirements, so they're reworking the drawing. And then where Maurice's and Dress Barn were, there's a clothing retailer that has made an inquiry about getting a sign permit, but they haven't filed anything yet, so I don't want to necessarily say what the name is yet, but, so it's a national clothing retailer. So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll get an application, that would be great.
Yeah, it would. That's good, I'm glad they're filling out.
Yeah.
What's below zero?
Five Below is, the way I understand it from one of my students that comes in to, you know, spend a little time mentoring with him, it's a kind of a, for teenagers where they can buy everything below five dollars. And I guess the kids really love it.
Oh, nice.
Because he was like super excited when he found out that. You know, he thought, you know, that was great, and we've heard from, you know, just a couple of people that work in the building that their kids like that shop as well. I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, well, that's nice to hear.
Don't have any kids, and if I did, they'd be way too old for that, so.
Very good. Hey, I think it is six thirty-five, so we can open the public hearing by reading the notice.
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, the planning board will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building, three zero one Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., on Tuesday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty-five P. M. on the application of Jones Sign Company, one twenty-three South Front Street, Department eight three two-two, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero three, representing Auto Zone. The applicant requests a special permit pursuant to Article seventeen, Section three hundred dash seventeen point five E of the zoning bylaw regarding the erection and maintenance of signs in excess of what is specifically allowed in the bylaw. The applicant is proposing an eighty-two point fifteen square foot building sign where thirty square feet is allowed under the signed bylaw. The property is located at one seventy-eight Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts, zero one five six six. Copy of the application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website at www.sturbridge.gov backslash planning dash board backslash pages backslash recent dash filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application package by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at five zero eight three four seven two eight zero eight, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any interested person, any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public who wish to participate remotely may listen or watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast or via cable television on Channel one nine one. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov backslash town-administrator backslash pages backslash how access virtual meeting.
Very good job.
Thank you. That's a mouthful.
I didn't realize you were there. The print must be very small, I thought it was a show to notice.
That'll let everybody know how to get to us.
Yes, definitely.
No short notices since COVID.
No, I guess not.
And just for clarification, I think you added an extra eight on our phone number, it's five oh eight three four seven two five zero eight.
Thank you.
Just in case anyone's calling.
Want everyone to be able to reach us.
You have an overview or an introduction?
I do. So this evening, we have Andy Serrato with us, representing Auto Zone, and this is an application for a special permit for an eighty-two point one five square foot sign for Auto Zone that would be mounted on the wall, as you see on the rendering there. This is very similar to the square footage for the other businesses that have been recently approved. For example, Ocean State Job Lot is at eighty-seven point five and Planet Fitness at eighty-seven point two five. So this is one of the storefronts that's being created out of the old J. C. Penney site. In my report, I have given you the special permit criteria, and I do believe that it meets the criteria for issuance. I think it will, I actually, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to go by there, but I think it actually looks a little better with a little larger signs because I think from the street, you couldn't tell. I mean, this is a multi-tenant sign, but if you missed that, you couldn't tell what was there. So I do believe the request meets the criteria for a special permit. We have sent the application out to staff and we have comments from FIRE, DPW in building, and no one expressed any concerns. And Andy is with us and he can go over the specifics of the sign that they're proposing.
Very good, thank you. Andy?
How you doing?
Great, thank you.
I have another variance tonight that I would have driven out there and I was worried about not making both. But I appreciate your time. And as we discussed, the size of the sign, I think fits proportionally for the building front. It does match the other size square footage wise. The Auto Zone did work with the town to try to conform with staying within the square footage that was allowed by the other locations. As mentioned, this building sits pretty far back from the road, so from the street, which is going to help better than if you go really from the street. But even driving into the parking lot itself, it's, it'll be easier for folks to pick up on, get over to the location where they need to go.
Very good.
The sign also, it did already go in front of design review as well, and they gave it its approval on the color schemes.
Very good, any questions or comments from anyone on it? Okay, if not, a motion then. Or it is a public hearing?
No, it is a public hearing. So, oh crap.
And we better see, there's no one here.
Yeah. I just.
I have a question about the lighting. Wasn't there an issue with Planet Fitness, they wanted to illuminate from the bottom up? Was that ever resolved?
Oh, that was the, that was the, the pylon sign, the multi-tenant was internally illuminated.
Oh, I knew that.
And this one, you can see the light will be over.
I know, yes. But how is it for Planet Fitness?
I can't recall without pulling.
Okay, just, just curious, just to have it uniform.
Yeah, I can't recall. They weren't talking about uplighting, just reflecting on the letters. I can't remember.
Yeah, nor can I. But if you check on that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, I can do that. Is there anyone on the line that would like to be heard on the application for Auto Zone at one seventy-eight Main Street for the new sign? I would say not.
Okay, great. Can we have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Sue, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, great, so that's unanimous. And now we'd like to have then a motion to grant the signed special permit as requested.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
All right. All said, Andy, we'll get the written decision out to the town clerk's office in the next day or two.
Can I ask a quick question? It's hard to see on the photo, on the camera here, the chairman Charlie, what's his last name?
Blanchard.
Okay, I'm from Pa, I was in Paxton when he was there, very nice gentleman.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Unfortunately, I was, we had a little rough ending, but not his fault, but I'm glad he's still involved with Down Government, good to see you up and around.
Very good, thank you very much.
Take care.
Okay, next item is the waiver of site plan request for one seventy-eight Main Street for some Tesla Supercharger parking space.
Yep, so this evening, we have Matt Burke here representing Tesla, and you, in my report, you'll notice that I indicate that electric vehicle charging stations are not only encouraged, but they're allowed as a matter of right. However, in this situation, the board had already granted a special permit to allow a reduction in parking. So I was concerned with allowing twelve electric vehicle charging stations to be installed in a parking lot that was already reduced without the board understanding what was going on and without the applicant agreeing that these would be non-exclusive spaces. And actually, Janay, I had recommended two items of approval in the memo, or actually seven, but two of them in particular is, one, the address was wrong on the plan, and I just want to let you know that's been corrected. So my condition number one has been corrected, and then my condition number two was to make a change to their signage, so the people would understand that if the parking lot was full, they could indeed park there. And so according to the email we received this afternoon, they will be labeled Tesla vehicle charging available, and they're indicating they want to encourage folks who aren't charging to park elsewhere, but they don't police it either way. And they're hoping that's sufficient, as they think during non-busy times, signage might steer someone into another space. And so we did send this application out to staff, no concerns were noted. Matt or?
Jody.
Jody.
Hi.
Hi, nice to meet you. You can come right up to the seat. So we will bring the plan up on the screen, and I'm not sure if Matt or Jody will be explaining the plan, but we have no concerns from a staff level if the board's comfortable with this. I think it's a great service to people in the area. When I met with Tesla a while back, they were talking about how many vehicles have been sold and that they really need to build out the infrastructure so that people that have purchased electric vehicles have appropriate locations to charge in the region. And so with that, I'll let either Jody or Matt.
Sure, yeah, so.
He was running late, but if he's there now, he can, he can take the lead if he's ready.
Awesome, thanks, Matt, thank you so much. I got caught up in traffic getting here, so a couple of, came on ninety and he had to go fifteen miles down before you can turn around.
Yeah.
So amazing drive, but we're super excited about this project. We've been developing Supercharging Stations all across New England and of course, North America for over a decade now. And so the plaza that we're looking at doing this twelve stall site at will allow us to expand our reach to accommodate more EV drivers. And so we see a high preponderance of Tesla vehicles already passing through Sturbridge, and so we want to offer them the opportunity of stopping at a local plaza, shopping there, patronizing the area, and also charging up as well. We know that the board was really specific about not having any additional spaces being taken, so these spaces aren't dedicated Tesla spaces, so they can still be utilized by any additional vehicle that might park there. So they're still open spaces, we're just enabling a EV charging infrastructure behind the curb line. So it doesn't take any parking away from the plaza, it's just providing it to, so it can actually be utilized as EV charging spaces in the event that a Tesla vehicle needs to use it. We've laid out, have also a couple updated drawings here, I'm not sure if you guys have the older models or the previous drawings that had dedicated spaces, but the ones that I brought today just has the actual available, just says Tesla Supercharging available, and I can share that with your team here. And that's two copies in there, so sorry that they're not stapled. Sorry, that's actually one, and here's a second one, so that's a complete copy.
Is this the existing condition?
Say it one more time.
Is that the correct existing condition plan?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So this is just one.
That's one set, and this is the second set here, you guys need a second copy. So it's just the signage, the layout, the layout hasn't changed at all, it's just the signage here. And the reason why we chose twelve is just due to the influx of traffic that we're seeing in this area. So we like to build our stations big enough to accommodate, you know, peak seasons like Christmas, you know, Thanksgiving, your, you know, Memorial Day is coming up or just passed as well, so we want to build for those super, you know, high utilized seasons. And so we build for twelve to accommodate those seasons, in any event that, you know, they're not being utilized, they can still be used for regular parking.
Very good.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. I just have a question about EV charging. Once someone plugs into charge, how long does it take to fill up?
Sure, absolutely, I like, I like the terminology fill up because we're, we're so used to it, so we say charge up, right?
Okay. You know the language.
No, sorry, somebody's fine. So it takes just about thirty minutes to get from zero to eighty percent. And so Tesla recommends no more than eighty percent, just to preserve the battery, you know, capability, but you can charge further beyond eighty percent. And if you do that, you can probably spend forty-five minutes charging there. So it's a great opportunity for, you know, our customers to get out the car and shop, and that's what we really look at, looking at like C-stores and plazas where they can have an opportunity to get out and also patronize the area. And I think that's been one of our, our main niches with really looking at how can we be a partner with our, with those who are, we're investing with to kind of give business back to their area. Otherwise, you know, like they're just staying on ninety-five or ninety, completely avoiding the area and just going to where they need to go to. So we do see a high emphasis, of course, in, in, in traffic here. So Sturbridge was, you know, my first, one of my first options when, when looking at the area, just because it's a prime connection between like, you know, Mass. and then going into Boston, going down into Hartford, it's a, it's a prime location, so there's a lot of people passing through here.
Crossroads of New England.
Absolutely.
We know that.
Yes.
Another question, how long does an eighty percent charge, how many miles is that good for?
Yep, so every vehicle is different, so you may have vehicles that accept a standard range, which is about two hundred and thirty miles. You may have a vehicle that can accommodate maybe a longer range, which can be like three fifty, three thirty. Then we have vehicles that we're releasing now that goes all the way to about forty, sorry, four hundred miles. So every vehicle will be different, but we cap it at not necessarily the battery size, but the charge percentage. So the more you charge, you know, the faster, I'm sorry, the.
The longer you last.
The, the, the less your battery is, the less your battery is, the faster it is to charge.
Oh.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, so if you're charging at ten percent, you'll get a faster charge as opposed to if you're charging from like eighty to ninety percent.
Right.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Absolutely.
Can I ask one more question? Because I'm not sure. When we say Tesla, Tesla charging station, is that only good for Tesla cars?
So we are proprietary network, and so it is something that is just for Tesla. So it's just accommodating Tesla vehicles. So we see currently that our market share within the United States is eighty-five percent, so most of EV vehicles on the road now is Tesla vehicles. So we built our network specifically to accommodate the preponderance that we see already on the road currently. So yeah, it is proprietary network, only servicing Tesla vehicles.
Okay, just, thank you.
Yeah.
That's a good question, I was going to ask that.
Absolutely.
You did.
Absolutely, that's a popular one we get, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Grab a motion then to grant the waiver of site plan?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Jeff, still there?
Approved, yep.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you. Very good, the site plan is waived.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get to a written decision in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Working on it.
Thank you.
That does sort of bring another aspect to this though, doesn't it, if they're only usable for Tesla?
Yeah, and, you know, I think it's interesting, so we, the town, we just finished a National Grid fleet analysis, and we're actually looking at our fleet and which vehicles does it make sense to, as we're looking at procuring vehicles in the future, which ones, which piece of equipment, which vehicles does it make sense to move toward electric? And right now, there's some significant grant funding for electric school buses, actually. And so when we did the study, we looked at not only what vehicle should you be getting, but the infrastructure, because we have no charging stations at any of our town buildings. So that was kind of an interesting process to go through, and I think more and more, we're going to see more incentives to go EV. Hopefully, we can, you know, smooth out the issues with the EV Discovery Center and that can be built here. And I think that it's going to take something like that to bring it more mainstream maybe because I'd be a little nervous that I'd run out of juice, you know, before you can get somewhere. And I guess that, you know, that, when I first met with Tesla, that was kind of what they were talking about, is they want a consistent network for their purchasers, so. But you're right, I think as we go forward, I mean, we addressed it in the bylaw where we allow it as of right, but in this case, I, I didn't want to do it without bringing it to the board.
Right, and this is the first I realized that they have their own proprietary setup. I mean, that's kind of a real, kind of a surprise to me. I thought that EV was EV and they could just use them.
I thought so too, when I first.
Kind of limiting to, to, to be that exclusive.
Is that common, I wonder, across all other companies or?
No, in Palmer, we had, we got a grant to put in a charging station at the town hall and at the library, and anyone can use it. I'm not even sure if Tesla can, I mean.
Right.
I really thought they were all pretty common. I mean, they have, they have higher capacity ones and then they have, you know, slower ones.
Right.
And some of the vehicles, you know, can't charge as fast as others, at least the older ones when we did this, like it's five years ago, I think. But I'm really surprised to hear that these are only for Tesla.
I was surprised too, because the ones we did at the Holiday Inn, anybody could use those.
Yeah, and that's why I've always seen them.
Yeah.
Looking at that, because it does make it kind of unique now that we're taking twelve parking spaces that are really only for one manufacturer.
Right, exactly. But if eighty-five percent of the people that are, eighty-five percent of the car sales for EVs right now are Tesla, so that's kind of the, the major one. I did question that too, of, you know, the need for so many spaces, but I guess that many people have Teslas, and I guess they kind of track, and maybe we should have asked Jody while, while he was here, but I think they kind of track their customers to see what their traffic patterns are to determine where they need to put these stations, so.
Interesting. Well, like you said, I'm sure there's a lot coming up eighty-four and getting on the Mass Pike and.
Yeah, there was, I think the Wall Street Journal did an article recently of like a cross-country road trip on an EV vehicle, and it was not smooth because there weren't, there weren't enough charging stations.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I wonder, maybe you know Charlie, if you've seen the unit and looked at it, how much does it cost to charge your car? Are you aware? No?
Well, no, actually, when we, when we did them in Palmer, it was a grant, and, and we had them, at least at the time I was there, it was really no charge. We could have set it up to have a charge and they have to put a cot in, but in this case, they, they weren't charging. And we tracked the electricity that was taken on these, and it really wasn't very much money at all. But it was in a whole different situation. I have no idea how many hours they were using or anything like that, or what the utilization really was.
Yeah, because I'm sure there's a, with your National Grid in-service that you had, did they talk about how the individual is charged for this, is, is invoiced for the charge?
Every station is a little different, I think, so when, we were actually working with Federated Church a few years back to, right before COVID, we actually were able to get a grant from National Grid to put in two, two EV charging stations in the back lot there, that, which is the church property, and people would pay by a credit card. They would put their card in, just like, as if you're going to fill up your tank, yeah.
Just curious as to the cost.
Yeah.
Oh, there is true.
It'll be interesting as we go along, I mean, Noble Energy also will have, I think, six EV charging stations there.
Only having six and they're having twelve?
Well, don't forget, they've also got the diesel and the fuel and, you know, so they're, they have a mixture.
And those are for any EV at Noble?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, Jean, you want to continue with your update?
Yes, so really the, I just wanted to update you on FEMA. So the last time the FEMA maps were changed for our community was in two thousand and eleven, and at that time, there were wide wholesale changes, I would say, that we had three thousand changes, property changes. So I worked with the conservation agent at the time and we appealed that, and we were able to get it down to around eleven hundred. People were newly affected by the FEMA changes. So these plans were supposedly sent to the Board of Selectmen in two thousand and twenty. I was the only one attending the meetings, and interestingly enough, I'm not listed anywhere on the, the letter. It just says Community Map Repository at three oh one Main Street. So I'm not entirely convinced that they actually arrived anywhere, because usually if something comes in the form of map, somebody puts it on my desk. So it doesn't really matter at this point. The ad's already been published in the paper, and we are in the ninety-day comment period, and that was already underway when I actually received these maps. So what I've been doing for the past week and a half is taking every single map panel and figuring out who was affected and making a personal map for every person that was affected. And I know this is hard to see, but what I've done is taken the old flood zone, which you can see in the brown, and then the new is the hash, and I overlaid it, and then I'm doing this for every property, and then I'm sending them a letter, so you can just pass that down.
For all the affected properties back from two thousand and eleven?
No, for this map update, two thousand and eleven's already done. This is the, these are the new ones, and affected property owners can appeal with scientific data, meaning they would have to do what's called a letter of map amendment, which would mean they'd have to hire an engineer to come out and do a flood elevation certificate and file the paperwork and the data with FEMA. And then with that.
And then with that, I'm going, so I'm going to send them a letter explaining that and then I'm also going to include this handout that just talks about, you know, why you change flood maps. Well, climate change, development, things like that, all can impact our flood zones. So I thought this was a good informational handout to send out. I can say as of today, I made 57 maps that are contained on five different panels. I have seven more panels to go through. So I'm guessing when I'm done, I'll probably have, I don't know, maybe a couple hundred changes because some of the others are more densely developed. I will say, I'm not really seeing so far the ones that I've done. I've done like the Walker Pond, Lad Road, Podunk Area. I'm not seeing a lot of structures in the flood zone, so there have been changes, but luckily, it hasn't impacted too many structures. So you don't need flood insurance unless your structure is in the flood zone. The other thing I will say is there, in areas that we would probably expect, there's been a lot of development or there's a large beaver pond. So the one area that I think has probably impacted the most is like Cooper Road and that section of Route 20 where the big beaver pond is behind Empire Village. So that's, at least of the panels I've done so far, that's one of my most significantly impacted sections. So when I'm done, I plan on, I'll zip all this into a PDF and we'll put it out in our OneDrive so that you can take a look. So then if your friends or neighbors or whatever call and say, what the heck is this, like from the town planner? I didn't make the maps, number one. And if, and I will put some office hours on there where people can stop in and they might want to look at the entire panel or, you know, sometimes it just helps to see it in a bigger scale. So that's what I've been doing. I probably will do that for the rest of this week and part of next week. And then I'm on vacation, so that's all my updates.
That's great. And thank you very much for doing that. I mean, it really is a lot of detail and I know other communities maybe don't go to that.
No, it's not required. It's just I feel it's the right thing to do, so it's something I've always done. But I know other communities don't do this.
Just let people know that there are changes and go find them.
Yes, exactly. So, and in fact, I've had a couple planners from a couple other towns saying, how are you handling this? And I said, oh, I'm making a map for everybody and sending it out. And they were like, oh yeah, no, we're not doing that. So, and maybe it's over the top, but it's thousands of dollars. And to find out, I just feel to find out from your mortgage company, you know, a year from now when your policy is up, I think you need, you know, some people probably really need to plan for that and put away some extra money because it's not small change, so.
A great service.
Very good. Well, thank you.
In residence.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda is old and new business. Sue, do you have any old and new business?
No. Maybe a quick update for the public about Lucky Mart. And then what's going on with Friendly's or Gito's facility? And then you, you had mentioned the, the fix, like what's going on with the things happening in town?
Yep, so the fix is, I'll start with the fix. The fix is finalizing their building plans to get ready to file for a building permit. I set up a meeting with the building inspector and we have a new fire inspector, Jen Ash, and we have a new deputy fire chief, Dave Martel. So I set up an initial meeting with them to meet with the architect and the owner. They went through the plans, discussed some code issues, and they've been meeting. I saw them here again this week, which I told them I don't need to be involved in. So, so they're meeting and working on the plans and they will be working towards getting a building permit. They have started some site work. I know they encountered a little bit of ledge over there. I'm not how significant, sure how significant that is yet, but that's my understanding as of today. They expect it will take a good year to do the build out, so it'll be a, a year before we can get a burger over there. So that's the update on that. Gito's is working. They're doing construction. They've done some demolition on the inside. They, as you probably have seen, they power, not even power washed, sandblasted the brick to get the white paint off and that's looking pretty good. So they're expecting at least a year or two. While we're in that neighborhood, Wicked Licks, you can see the opening soon sign. She's kind of getting very close. She's done a great job over there. Things are really looking good, so hopefully she'll be opening soon.
This summer?
Yes, yes.
So they repaved the whole lot there and did the lines. It looks pretty nice over there.
Yeah, she's been doing a really good job over there, so. And then the last one you asked about was Lucky Mart. So Lucky Mart, I was contacted by the construction manager and it appears that all of their materials to put in their, not, maybe not all, but a lot of their materials to put in their stormwater management system are on back order and they can't get them until the end of summer. They would like to be able to open somehow, so I've let them know that I will work with them. Their thought now is that they would do base coat and do some temporary stormwater management. We're not sure what that will look like. It's a land use with a high pollutant load, so we can't just let them operate on gravel and not do something with runoff. So I talked with the engineer today and they're going to try to come up with some temporary measures. And Becky Gendrow, our conservation agent, and I will look at that. And if it seems reasonable, I, I don't even think I'll have it come to the board. I think I'll just, you know, go ahead and then, you know, finish the job up. It's too bad because it'll be a lot of cost because then they'll have to rip up the pavement again. So, you know, the gas pumps and everything are all piped, but they can't finish the site work until they get some more materials, so. So that's where they're at. And then the last two, 90 Charlton Road and New England Cold are both really coming along very well. New England Cold is hoping, hoping to open sometime this month on a temporary occupancy. I know they've been hiring, having job fairs. And I reached out to the owner today to see if he might need an inspection before I go on vacation. And then I'm going out to the 90 Charlton Road site on July 13th to just kind of give that a once-over, so.
How about the Noble site?
Noble, no new information to report other than what I told you. My information from Mass DOT is that they will not be approving the traffic signal, signalized intersection. Michael Frisbee feels that perhaps he can't build that without that. We've enlisted the help of the state rep to see if there's anything that can be done. And we'll just keep plugging away. I've been trying my hardest on this one and I don't know how much more I can do. I've been to, you know, I've done every, I think I've done honestly pretty much everything I can.
Well, I've seen the excavating they've done.
Yep, so they've started building the travel plaza. And worst case, at some point, they'll have to come back for an amendment of the special permit, or the site plan because if DOT is saying a light is not warranted and I recommended conditions of approval on a signalized intersection, obviously, they'd never be able to open the way that permit's written. So if DOT's saying it can't be done, then obviously we need to change it because they're saying it won't impact safety. On a local level, we probably disagree, but we don't control the roadway, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you. Chris, do you have anything?
I just had a question. Remind me, in, in Charlton, that major construction are doing under 20, what is that again?
Amazon.
Oh, okay, that's the one, okay.
Yeah. There's actually two things under construction, I believe, the LNG facility, which is the liquefied natural gas.
I thought that was farther in, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really a...
And then the Amazon warehouse. I believe they've broken ground on, they've broken ground on one of the, either that or the other one.
A lot of Amazon.
Yeah.
Up in the hill.
Been a lot of groundwork up there.
I was looking and I was like, dear God, what is that?
Yeah.
And the gas one is on the other side near, what is it, Incon?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing, no.
Jeff, do you have anything for old and new business?
Nothing, Charlie.
Okay, great. With that then, I guess we'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, very good. Thank you all. Have a great evening. Thank you.